Has evolved significantly, offering restoration, recovery, and transitional housing to impoverished, addicted, and abused men, women, children, and youth. Today, Wayside Cross Ministries located in Aurora stands as a testament to the power of the new beginnings and the new hope. Ten years ago, in 2015, we proudly opened a state-of-the-art 48,000-square-foot facility that serves as a safe haven for 110 men. This building, which houses our corporate offices, is fully debt-free and reflects our financial stability and commitment to responsible stewardship. One of our key divisions, Urban Youth Ministry, we call UIM, has been serving the community for over 30 years. UIM is dedicated to empowering at-risk youth aged 5 through 17 by providing hope, direction, through free programs that enhance their physical and educational experiences outside of school. Our mission is to help these young individuals discover and achieve their full God-given potential. We are excited to announce our plans to build a beautiful 13,000-square-foot youth center on land currently owned by St. Olaf Church in Montgomery. With the support and approval of the Village of Montgomery, we aim to acquire four acres of land to create a facility that will significantly enhance our outreach efforts. This new center will serve hundreds of youth from both Montgomery and Aurora communities, fostering personal growth and development for many years to come. We respectfully request your approval for this project, which we believe will not only benefit our youth, but also enrich the entire community. This youth center will start as a testament to our collective commitment to the well-being of our young people and will be built for the glory of God. Thank you for considering our proposal. We look forward to the opportunity to collaborate with you in building a brighter future for the youth of Montgomery. Thank you. And I would like to introduce our Assistant Director of Urban Youth Ministry, Isaac Soriano.
Quickly, one thing I realized that I did not mention is the condition that, you know, this just reminded me that staff is proposing that the facility be restricted to the uses described in the letter of intent, and that it shall not include drug rehabilitation or other similar uses.
My name, my name is Isaac Soriano. I'm the Assistant Director of Urban Youth Ministries.
Can you make sure the green light's on?
Hello, excuse me. My name is Isaac Soriano, and I am the Assistant Director at Urban Youth Ministries here at Wayside Cross. For over 35 years, this program has provided at-risk youth with mentorship, academic programs, and support, and faith-based guidance. Urban Youth Ministry is critical in transforming the lives of many at-risk youths in our community. UIM currently has 24 students in their tutoring program, as well as 70 in their after-school programs. During the summer, we touch the lives of over 400, 400 young people in our community. Our students stay with us throughout their entire lives that they are able into the program. So, we have students who have been with our program for most of their educational background, and we have very good relationships with both our parents and our community. We strive to always keep our students safe, and we do everything possible to make sure that all of our students and all of the people we serve are safe and feel comfortable in our facilities. To give part of our testimony, I have two students with me today to talk about what their life, what UIM means to them. We will begin with our Alonso.
Hello, my name is Alonso DeGaro. I've been going to this program since I was in second grade, so, for 10 years now. I've been attending this program. It means a lot to me. I have met wonderful people here, and the staff have helped me a ton, like, learning about God, giving me free food, or... Oh, I'm sorry. All right. Give me free food, or like, teach me, teaching me, helping me on my homework. And I met so many great friends, so many great people. I could call friends along the way. And it helps me improve, it helped me prove myself as a better person. So, I feel like this program, like, will aid more kids in the future if we're allowed to get this building being done. It's a great area to help our kids in the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arturo Luna, or Arthur Luna. UIM is a really good place. They help many young students learn about God and help with, like, academic studies, with homework and stuff like that. I personally have a lot of attachment to UIM because I really not used to be good in school. I used to be horrible. I didn't even really believe in God. I knew who he was, but I didn't really know much about him. But UIM has shown me a lot about that. They showed me how my grades do matter and helped me too, in stuff that I didn't understand. UIM has also, has also been really safe. They, that's like mainly their biggest priority. If I ever got like a cut or something, they would give me a Band-Aid for that. But they would really like, really activate safetiness around UIM. And UIM is a really good place. They really help us. That is all.
Thank you.
And this is just a small example of the lives that we touch and the youth that we impact on a day-to-day basis at UIM. We love our students. We love our community. However, our current space is limiting. It's limiting our ability to serve the youth. As the, as our community expands, we hope to expand alongside the community as well. And we feel that this building will provide a safe environment for our students to continue to grow, both academically, socially, and spiritually as well. I would also, now, I would like to introduce Chris Dahl, the owner's representative.
Hi, my name is Chris Dahl. I'm the owner's representative for Wayside Cross Ministries. I don't know that I have more to add than what's been said here, but I do want to be able to introduce people if you have questions, especially of the architect or the engineer who are also here. I think it is important that we restate what Tony said there just a few minutes ago, that the village has stated in their approval that the use of the facility shall be restricted to those described in our letter of intent and shall not include drug rehabilitation. I know that's a concern of the community, and that the youth shall be restricted to serving youth under the age of 18. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the zoning commission and board members and neighbors for allowing us to have this time to speak. My name is Dan Britton. I'm with St. Olaf Church, the President Council. St. Olaf has been in Montgomery since 1969. This is our 136th year in the Aurora area. We have partnered with Wayside Cross Ministries. Their last name is Ministries, which by definition, spiritual work or services. This is what they do. Wayside has used St. Olaf's basement for the Urban Youth Ministries for the last 14 years for their summer camp. Wayside's sole purpose for this facility is for youth outreach, to give the youth a positive example of how to live. A vote to not approve this zoning would be like be ignoring the needs of the youth in the area. So, we ask that you consider this and vote in favor. St. Olaf will continue to work with Wayside as this is a joint ministry. St. Olaf has always been a good neighbor, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from Wayside Cross that wanted? No? Okay, and at this point of the meeting, I will go ahead and open up the public hearing in consideration of a primary and final plat of subdivision and rezoning of portions of the property from R1 to B1. If any member of the public would like to comment on this item.
Actually, Chris, would you mind grabbing the sign-in sheet? I can start calling out names.
Please, yep. We will call your name. We're just asking if something has already been covered. Just let us know that you agree with what's been covered. Otherwise, we don't want everybody saying the same exact thing, time after time. Thank you.
All right, so there will be three different public hearings for this. We'll go over each item. So, there'll be another chance to ask any follow-up questions when we get to the next file public hearing. But to start with, the first name I have here is Jen Heinz on Douglas Avenue. If you could please come forward.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
So, help me God.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jen Heinz. I moved to Montgomery in 2014 with my husband. Because of where our home is situated, we witness a lot of activity. I like to think of us as the unofficial neighborhood watch. In February 2015, so like 13 months after we first moved in, there was a shooting right outside Krug School that caused the whole school to go on lockdown and issued the SWAT response. And then, at another date, I was just sitting, or I'm sorry, I was in the kitchen making dinner, and gunshots rang out. And I started to not feel safe in my own home. So, I spoke with my husband. We dropped a lot of money on surveillance footage. We got cameras all over the place just so that we could feel safe in our own house. If anything happens, the cops come to our door and ask what kind of footage we have. And the footage we've caught's quite troubling. There's been at least five or six shootings in the last five years. There's been at least one murder. We've also managed to help catch at least one criminal and take at least one of them off the streets. There's been multiple accidents. There's heavy traffic. There's lots of drag racing, loud exhaust at all hours of the day. It's just a matter of time before someone gets seriously injured or worse. I even wonder if sometimes a car is just going to come through my house. We also already have a big homeless problem. We have a panhandler at our intersection almost every single day. And then, we're in close proximity to Hesse House. And then, within two-mile radius, there's a liquor store that has extended hours. We have drunk homeless people shouting at all hours of the day and night. People come up to our doors, asking us for money. People go through our garbage. We had a drunk pass out on the tree one time. We had to call EMS on him. We also have a homeless person that just throws trash in our yard. I got video surveillance footage of him just throwing bicycle tires in our yard. And then, just .2 miles away from us, there's the Bank of Montgomery. That's been robbed so many times. And so, it's already an unsafe neighborhood, in my opinion. So, I'm wondering what Wayside Cross is going to bring in. Because when you do a quick Google search, it's quite troubling. Granted, it looks like the last week or two, they tried to bury some of this stuff. But, I mean, they housed a member of the Ripper Crew, who is a gang member, that, there were four men that formed a satanic cult that may have killed as many as 20 women in the 80s. And they let that guy live there for a bit. And then, they also were found guilty of housing 20 people that were registered sex offenders. And then, they were forced to vacate because that facility was too close to a park. So, I, I don't know, understand why, if they're not vetting what kind of people they're bringing into their own housing, what kind of people are they going to bring into our community? We have a duty to protect our residents, the children of Krug Elementary School in St. Olaf. So, please, I really hope you take everything into consideration and make the wise decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have, sorry. If anyone needs proof, I have surveillance footage too. So, if anybody needs it, let me know.
Thank you. Next, I have Dan Knapp.
Hi, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name, my name is Dr. Dan Knapp, and I'm a resident here and husband of Jen Heinz, who you just heard of. And there's three reasons why I would encourage you to vote no for this initiative. The first reason is because this is a duplication of services. We have extended parks, recreation, free for any residents to use. We have a Planet Fitness just north of us, who, for $10 a month, would be able to work with anyone. For kids, over the summer, that's a reduced rate. And so, I do encourage our folks, our citizens, to consider using the services that already exist within our community. The second, of which you heard, is in the last 11 to 12 years, there have been significant shootings within our neighborhoods. We've, over and over and over again, have worked with Montgomery Police Departments, and we have helped them apprehend a few individuals as well. What risk are we going to be bringing our kids if we bring in 30, 40 more kids into this community? It is not a safe community, unfortunately. And lastly, there's been a couple of references to this institution being very strict in what they're serving, specifically not serving addiction populations. Just north of us in Aurora, an institution from Wayside was servicing rapists, murderers, and people who were not supposed to be at that institution. These will be the issues that we will be coming into Montgomery if we accept this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, is it Judith Brown?
Yep.
Ms. Brown, do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
I'm Judith Brown. I live on Hartway Court. 57 years ago, my husband and I built our home, raised three sons that went to Rosecrue School, KD Waldo Junior High, and graduated from East Aurora High School. I look out my back family room window, my kitchen window, which is the portion of the home that I live in mostly, and look at St. Olaf's Church. Since we were there 57 years ago, I watched St. Olaf's Church be built. We were very happy. I would ask that you people drive by the property and take a look how it is laid out. The property that the, they want to use for this facility will take up much of the area, but there will still be a small strip that eventually, they will probably come back and want to rezone that and put up another, an additional building. That's how we have kind of agreed upon this thing. They're asking for it to be rezoned from residential one to business one. This is an entire residential area. That's why I'm asking you to take a drive-by. They've mentioned what the mission of Wayside Cross is. It's a fantastic program. This program that they have for the children, I was at the meeting last Saturday. It is a fantastic program for children. But they're going to bus in 70% of the people that come there. Can't this facility be built in that location rather than busing them in? Eventually, we will be having fundraisers for this group. That will bring in more people to the area. As I say, my backyard is the Park District and Rosecrue Baseball Diamonds. You're going to have three baseball diamonds there in the summer that are filled with young people, too. We have probably 10 to 15 signatures on petitions that neighbors have signed that we would like to present either to you, your group, or to the Village of Montgomery. I'd also like to know exactly what signage is going to be put on it. If it says Wayside Cross Mission, that's an altogether different invitation to that building than if it's the Youth Foundation. I don't have a lot more to say. I know there's several others that would like to speak. I just am asking you to drive by and see what it is, where they want to put a business, and open that up in a residential area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Brown? I can take those petitions if you want. I can take those petitions and put them in the, in the record. Okay, thank you. Next, we, oops, sorry. Next, we have Edgar Barnes.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Edgar Barons. I live on Hartway Court. I want to say first off, while I commend and support the efforts and the programming a facility like the proposed Youth Activity Center offers, I oppose the rezoning of the area to business, which is not appropriate for the location in question, which is primarily residential. The proposed center area would not only be detrimental to the harmonious adjacent residential area, but also be a keystone for further business rezoning along the Douglas Sherman Corridor. The size and aesthetics architecturally of the proposed center is not visually pleasing. I think because of the, well, yeah, because of the windows and the fact that there's a basketball court in there, it looks more like a bunker than a prairie-style building, which is what they're claiming it looks like. I think it doesn't. I think the resident, I think the residents around this area, if this were ever built, I think they would be, I think it has a bunker-like, I think these things can be redesigned, because right now, it doesn't look so good. The windowless wall along the north, I think, north and west, I don't know, I can't, I don't know with the north, north and west sides, giving it a bunker-like look. Additionally, should the center be built, the entire area would be flooded with high-resolution LED lighting 24/7, causing exorbitant lighting, light pollution for the residents in that area. I live near a church, the New Life Church. They use similar lighting, and I have to tell you that it does not stop at the property line. It floods the entire residential area. And most people think it's safe, and it's, but a lot of people don't want light going all the way down through their windows, down the hallway, into their bedrooms. And that's exactly what's happening. So, maybe that's another area you guys should look into, because I think the lighting is also a problem. I'm glad to know that there are other hearings coming up. And that's what I have to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Terry Burmes.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Burmes. I live at 187 Sherman Avenue. For a moment, I'm going to play devil's advocate, although that's probably not the right phrase to use for this kind of facility. But, you know, to be honest, the programs are fantastic. The services they provide are fantastic. I disagree. I kind of like the building. However, I, and it's a big however, I live down Sherman Avenue from where this facility is going to be. I'm on the other side of the Sherman Lincoln Stop Sign. Frankly, it's not going to make a difference to me once building is done. Apparently, this program's been going on for 12, 13 years at St. Olaf. I didn't know about that until Saturday morning, when I went to, to the presentation. So, and I'm just saying that just to be honest about the situation. But the fact of the matter is, because I live so far away, I have to defer to my neighbors, who are far more adjacent to the facility and their properties are than where I'm going to be. I'm not going to be the one that has to see it. I'm not going to be the one that has to live with it there. And on that basis, I think for, a lot of times, issues that come before the village, it's for the good of the entire village. You have to look at it that way. You can't be so parochial about things. I don't see this really as being like, and I hate to say this, because it all comes down to money. It's not a job creator. It's not a revenue generator. So, I think the voices of the people who live closest are probably the ones that should be heard the most. And because of that, I'm with those neighbors to ask that this not be approved.
Paul Milton, Minton?
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I live right across the street, kind of kid corner, from St. Olaf's, 1206 Douglas. One thing I just consider, it's good. I agree with what they want to do. But, yeah, I look at the traffic. It's got cost, more traffic right now. I'd say, I'd sit outside of my front porch, and I see cars going by 45, 50, 60 mile an hour all the time, not even slowing down for the stop sign. Very rarely, they do stop. I'd say you probably easy account cars that do stop than those ones that don't stop. Understand, there'd be youth only, and no living on the property, just a facility. And for the panhandler, the lady you mentioned, he is out there pretty much every day. There's a tree by my driveway. He parks his bicycle behind, and he sits back there. He walks up, all up and down the property. I've seen him urinating on the fence many times. I didn't see it, but I've seen results of it. But I have not seen him do it, actually do it. But he has done it. And it's just bringing, I just say more traffic, that's the only thing. And as of, I think, tonight, or last night, or sometime today, this happens two, three times a year at my house. Somebody drove through my yard. Went in the neighbor's yard, through my yard. I got pictures of it. Almost hit a car, I guess, sitting there. I don't know how I kept from not hitting it. And he's got, I think, like, three or four times a year, or at least twice a year, that happens. People just drive through my yard. I'm just bypassing traffic, or, or what, or they drunk. And continuously picking up beer bottles out on my yard, the little, one-hit, whatever you call them, whiskey bottles, a little one-shot thing. They're out there constantly. So, people are drinking and driving all the time. And the thing about the subdivision, I'm not sure subdivision means not housing. It's going to be just for this facility. About three years ago, I actually found a slug on top of my house, where, right where my daughter was sleeping. There'd been any, a bus just fell from the sky, because it'd been a direct hit. It was probably hit her in her bed while she was sleeping. I think that's about it. It's just, for what they want, I see what they want. I agree. I've, I work with youth myself, and I agree that I've seen youth over there. My grandkids went over there at St. Olaf's during the school year, during the summer. So, I can see what they're doing is good. But you also look at all the bad, too. Biggest thing is with traffic. There's be stoplights, could be put up sometime or another. They're going to need them. Stoplights, or more stop signs, or something. About it. Thank you.
I think we have, next is Gary Sipes. Sips? Sipes? Okay.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I've lived on Harmony Drive since 1980. I, too, agree with what their idea, their mission is good. I don't understand if most of the kids are coming from Aurora Schools, why is this not being built in Aurora? You're busing these kids to our neighborhood from Aurora Schools, then build it in Aurora where the kids are located. Saturday, they said this would also be opened up to Montgomery children in the neighborhood. Well, we already, you know, we can do St. Olaf's summer vacation schools. If we already belong to churches, we send our kids to their summer vacation programs. The Park District has programs. They said, too, this would increase our property values. I don't think something with Wayside Cross, again, I applaud their mission, the reputation in the last couple of years has not been good. I don't think it's going to increase our property values. I've lived there since 1980. I love the open fields. You've got kids walking through from Krug School, people cut across the fields, you've got people running their dog. It's a nice, open, green space. So I, yes, the mission is good, I just don't, and it is residential, there's a lot of older people. We don't want to hear basketballs all summer long, during the day, at night till 7 o'clock at night. I just, I just think if it's serving Aurora kids, it should be built in Aurora somewhere, and I can't believe Aurora doesn't have a piece of property they could sell to this mission.
Thank you.
Last here is Jeff Collins.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth? It is. My name's Jeff Collins. I live directly across from St. Olaf's driveway. I do construction, so I'm very adept to seeing things getting rezoned and that. If you're changing the zoning to B1, I'm concerned what's going to happen with Lot 2, as shown on the survey, and it's a small piece of property that's north of St. Olaf. You know, if this gets changed over to B1, are they going to try and rezone it to residential at a later point or something else? You know, I mean, we need some transparency here. I just, I think that all needs to be brought up. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That is all I have on the list?
At this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Open it up for commissioners, questions, comments.
Sorry about that. All righty, Leanne Precup.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I would like to reiterate a lot of what the neighbors have said. That has been a residential area forever, with beautiful, open, green space. Family that has lived there for 45 years. The property was purchased because of where it was and the property around it, along with a lot of the older generation that live in that neighborhood. And to put something like this up and rezone this in that area is absolutely wrong. It's awful. What you're doing to the people that have lived there for years and years and years, this is a well-established community and subdivision. And to put up a facility like this with the noise pollution, with the light pollution, and with the amount of traffic, and I know you keep saying that people are going to be bused in, the traffic on Douglas in that area is absolutely dangerous. I have an 18-year-old daughter who tries to get in and out of the driveway. The property is directly north of St. Olaf. It is the most dangerous place to be. Nobody stops at the stop signs. People come down the hill. It's awful, absolutely awful. Adding more traffic in that area is going to be detrimental to everyone's safety there. And the other concern is also that second parcel of land, and when is that going to be rezoned? Because that is going to be taking up the entire area, and it's going to be extremely disrespectful to the people who have lived there for years and years and years. And if these people are being, these children are being bused in, 70% of them, there's an area where the 70% of them come from that they can put this facility. Thank you.
Next is Randy Huggins.
Yes.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Randy Huggins. I live at the only house that's in your way, okay? Right there. 831, 284 Sherman Avenue is in your way. I bought that house 23 years ago, with the idea that, and I was told that it would never be built on. There was going to be a street come through. There's a fire plug in the middle of the yard out there, and they stopped all that, and I was told that would never be built on, ever. Well, this was the time of year I wanted to start enjoying it. I'm 72 years old now, and I've paid my dues, but I have loved the area, have never had any problems, never, ever had any problems. And if this goes in, it's going to be trouble. That's all I can tell you.
Thank you.
Here we go.
Sue?
No.
Just him? Okay. Then that is everybody on the list.
Okay, so I will go ahead and reclose the public hearing, turn it over to, yes?
Is it possible to speak if I did not sign that petition?
I'm sorry, what?
Is it possible?
Oh, yeah. You're the petitioner? Sure. You wanted to answer the questions?
Yes, I promise to tell the truth.
Oh, you swear, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, thank you. My name is Dan Haas, Reverend Dan Haas. I was pastor in Aurora for 40 years. I've been named the new interim pastor, and I'm living now at 288 Sherman Avenue in Montgomery. And I sincerely appreciate the concerns that have been expressed in terms of crime, in terms of traffic. One of the reasons that Wayside is busing in their students isn't because they're all coming from Aurora, but many of them come immediately east over Douglas Avenue from those, from that complex there. Many of the students come from there, and they're going to drive those students over in vans and buses. That's, that's part of the busing. So I appreciate that there's a traffic problem, and even in the summer, when they do summer camps, which I've attended and been at, at St. Olaf's when I was pastoring at other churches in Aurora, they would bus those kids over with vans for, because of the traffic. And my, as I listened to many of the concerns, those concerns exist now before we've put in this facility. The crime didn't come because you put in the facility. The shootings haven't come because you put in a facility. The traffic isn't coming because you put in a facility. It's there already. Those issues need to be solved. We are going to provide, or Wayside is going to provide, I hope, some abatement of some of those issues by working with young people who live in this neighborhood, who are going to grow up to be adults, possibly not in some of the best conditions. And so I don't know, I don't believe that Wayside will contribute negatively to what's there already. I believe they're going to contribute positively to what's there already. They're going to bring some positive new ideas to the area. They're going to be working with children in the area. Those children are going to grow up to be adults. They're not working with anybody over 17. There's no one going to be in that facility that's convicted sex offender. There's no one that's going to be in that facility that works in drug rehabilitation or mental illness rehabilitation. They're working with children. That's what they're working with. They're coming to this community wanting to work with kids in Montgomery, not just Aurora. I don't know what the split is, but I, I think it'll be at least close to 50/50, kids from Aurora and kids from Montgomery. And Aurora is frankly right across on the other side of Douglas Road. So they're still in the region, they're part of the mix in Montgomery. I just want you to, and I, and I believe you are, I know that the board is working, the village, I'm sure, is working on crime in the area. I'm sure they're doing traffic studies in the area. Those are problems that need to be solved whether we come there or not, but we're not going to exacerbate those problems. Our kids aren't going to be involved in shootings, our kids aren't going to be involved in damaging your property, these kids aren't going to be involved in creating a traffic jam. Most of them don't even have a driver's license. So that's why they have to bring them there, and they'll bring them there in one or two vehicles. They're not going to significantly add to the traffic jam that's there. So I would really encourage you to look at a track record that Urban Youth Ministries has had in Aurora. They have had a tremendous impact in a number of neighborhoods that are experiencing some of the problems that this neighborhood evidently is experiencing now. And they've had a tremendous impact in the safety of those communities, solving other issues for them, how by having impact, long-term impact, with the children in those neighborhoods that grow up to be adults. So I want to offer that to you to mitigate some of what has been said, that I don't know that these problems are going to be caused by the, by the center, they're already existing there. Urban Youth Ministries is coming to help make it a better place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am?
I'm sorry, ma'am. If you want to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name and sign in. Please state your name for the record.
It's Angela Minton.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, but I just wanted to ask a question.
Okay, we can't, I mean, if you want to ask it, you can ask it and...
We'll answer once we get to the discussion part and close the hearing.
Did you say that you're the pastor there?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've been the pastor there for how long?
Two weeks.
Yeah. So what do you know about what's been going on there?
I have, I've visited there many times. I was a pastor in four...
I live across the street?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, this is something you two can...
But those are, those are grade school children.
Yes, that's who we're going to be bringing in.
Well, 17 is not grade school children.
All right, at this time, we're closing, ma'am. At this time, we are closing the public hearing for this and turning it over to commissioners for comments and questions.
So I think, first off, there, like, let me kind of review some of the questions that came in from the neighbors, so we can either have staff or the petitioners answer those questions. Some of the questions that came in related to the zoning, what would be permitted there, and how much of the lot is being rezoned, so I don't know. Tony, if you can please go over that a little bit?
Sure. So currently, what's being proposed is a rezoning of the Lot 2 portion to B1 neighborhood business. That is a commercial, as was expressed, that is a commercial district. It is designed with the intent of being restricted to uses that can be compatible with a residential, within a residential area and with adjacent residences. So we have our B1 and we have our B2. B2 is much more broad in what is allowed. B1 is much more restrictive. So we have a list in our Unified Development Ordinance of what is both permitted in that district or what is going to require a special use. So this is an example of a use that requires a special use. They have to go through the public hearing process, they have to notify neighbors, all of these things, so that we get feedback. I can make that list available as well after the meeting, if you'd like to see it. And, yeah, so that's it about the commercial district. In terms of the use, we do have, you know, the church right there and the school right there, and so Youth Activity Center made sense in terms of the compatibility, from a compatibility and character standpoint in that regard. And then I think the only other thing from a zoning and plan review standpoint was lighting. The photometric plan is not present today, but as I said before, the maximum allowed is half a foot candle along the property lines of the adjacent residences, and what is currently shown on their preliminary plan is like .1 or 0. So it's, should be very minimal. We do require that all lights be angled downwards as well to try and mitigate the potential impact. We don't want any, you know, we don't want lights shining into windows and things like that.
I would elaborate just a little bit. As the zoning administrator, it is my job to make decisions on what qualifies as what type of use. This was an interesting use, as it doesn't squarely fall into any sort of listed uses, does not necessarily qualify as a church use, therefore, the R1 zoning couldn't necessarily stay.
Speak up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, I'll try a little, be a little closer to the mic. Does that help? Yes? Okay. So it's my job to decide how a use gets classified. So when this use came in, it was an interesting one, because it is basically a community service use, and it is faith-based. However, it does not qualify as a church, and hence, we had to look at some potential rezoning to accommodate the use that they wanted to do. Given what they wanted to do, indoor recreation, because they were going to be providing youth leagues in there, seemed the most appropriate way to go, and in the B1 district, that is considered a special use. I will note that we also looked that daycare uses are permitted uses in the B1 district. However, this doesn't necessarily meet the strict definition of what a daycare center would be. So again, we were looking at what other uses it could be qualified as, and we landed on the indoor recreation use for this. So that is why we're looking at the B1 zoning, but just wanted to give you some context on what would be permitted or not permitted residential districts versus, versus commercial districts. So we're trying to work with the petitioner and finding a zoning that would have the least amount of impact on the adjacent neighbors, and the B1 use does have a much more restricted permitted use list than a B2 district would.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate as well, there was one comment about the strip along Douglas being developed. As I mentioned in the staff report review, there is underground utilities that run through there that make it very expensive to try and develop that portion. That's why this building is not being proposed for that location. You might be able to comment more about the expense or the obstacle that that presents.
Yeah, so running, running diagonally through that site is a 24-inch storm sewer that they would have to completely relocate out the, of the footprint of their building, which would be cost, generally speaking, cost prohibitive to be able to do, which is why they ended up locating the building where it's currently proposed.
I'm sorry, ma'am, not right now. We've closed the public hearing. We have another public hearing coming up in a few minutes.
So this public hearing is specifically related to the rezoning and the subdivision, so there will be, we'll open it up again when we get to the use, and then again, when we get to the variances that are needed for the specific structure. Does the petitioner have anything else that they want to add related to any concerns about the use and the zoning at this time? related to any concerns about the use and the zoning at this time?
Yeah. I hear the concerns of the residents and I want to assure them that what has been asked here is strictly to serve youth. It's not for adults, it's not for adult rehabilitation, and it never will be. That is not only our pledge, but it's also the requirement of the village. As far as some of the things that have been discussed here, the residential flavor, the safety of the residents, the traffic, I think Reverend Haas was very eloquent in saying that those are situations that are already in place. We hope not to exasperate them or bring any further issue to those. We are here, we are here chiefly to provide, to provide education, faith-based education for children who might not have that opportunity and to improve their life and improve the community that they live in. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners? Comments, questions for anybody? Can you put your microphone on?
I do have a question. There was talking about the percentage of where the students are being bused in. Is there a breakdown currently where they are coming from? Like how many from each village or city around the area?
Most of the students are from Aurora. We, if you, we don't have a breakdown right now of exactly all of the students and where they're coming from. But most of the students are coming from Aurora. However, most of them are coming from within five blocks of the proposed project, whether it is the buildings a few blocks away or in the general area as well.
I've got one more question. You mentioned like thirty students like for, during the week, seventy during the summer. What's your capacity for this building? Could you have more?
I'm Marcin Krzyzewski, I am an architect for this project. I don't have an exact answer to this question, but I believe that for twelve thousand square feet with two hundred square feet per occupant, we are talking, mathematical question.
Well, I mean, to me, it's not just at one time. I guess my, where I'm going with this is it possible that you're going to get more than seventy people during the summer programs? Are you going to limit it to seventy people or students?
We have a gym situation, basketball court. So if we take a couple teams together, plus maybe third team for the tournament, maybe fourth, that's the maximum capacity the building can fit in.
Thank you.
And since I'm here, I wanted to mention that the school use is probably, the classrooms are one more use that it's going to be, the building is designed for. And I think that brings tremendous value to the community that these kids can have an opportunity to really make a change in their lives. Because they're going to teach them the real skills and it's a faith-based school. So, I don't see any reasons to worry about these kids who decided already to go to such a facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Going back to the busing issue, are these, with the activities going on at St. Olaf, are kids being bused there currently? Are they being picked up and dropped off there currently at St. Olaf? At the youth program that you had mentioned runs in the basement or...
For our summer programs, the students are being bused in only for, during our summertime.
Okay, great, thank you.
Will that program be moving to the new facility or will it be run in both St. Olaf and the new facility?
Could you repeat the question?
Will the youth camp be held both at St. Olaf and your new facility? Or will it be moving to the new facility?
Upon completion of this building, we intend to have the summer camp in this new facility down at the church. And just to add one more thing, you know, appreciating the concerns expressed here, I just want you to know that out of our six divisions of ministries under the umbrella of Wayside Cross Ministries, this is the only division, is a preventive outreach. All other locations we have, people come to us after they mess up in their life. So this is the only program we are preventing them so that they may not get there. So, we teach them structure. And the thirty-five children we talked about on a week, weekly basis, they are constrained to the classrooms. And these kids come from families, their parents don't have the ability to teach them English and maths and science. So we do after-school programs after a school program to equip them to do better in science and maths. So these are the activities going on throughout the week. And only Saturdays it is open for other folks and they are highly supervised and structured. So, we would bring, we would like to bring more, you know, order and, and sanity. And, and we have proven in the last hundred years in being so effective in the community by transforming lives. Hundreds and hundreds of lives are being transformed every day.
To follow on that question, I had a question on what you said. You said on Saturdays, you bring other people? What does other people mean?
Well, any, anybody in the community, those who are not part of the tutoring programs, they could use the facility for basketballs or if you have a soccer court outside or a volleyball, you know, court outside, they can be used by the people nearby.
Are they supposed to be minors or would they be...
No, it is age from five to seventeen.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be minors?
Yeah. Five to seventeen, yes.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead. For the makeup of currently for your five to seventeen, does it lean more to the five age or does it lean more to the seventeen age?
More of the, the, the younger age.
Younger age right now? So like under what, ten maybe?
Yeah, I think so, Isaac.
Yes, currently, right now, we lean towards the younger age. We have more elementary school students than we do older students. Most, more than half of our students are younger students.
And then when you say busing, were you, it's not a physical bus, right? It's like a van or something?
Well, we have three minivans and we do have a bus too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Could you also help me understand the hours?
During the weekdays, it's the afternoons. And Saturdays, Isaac, what are the timing?
All right. So normally it is in the afternoon for during the day. And usually Saturdays, when we do have program, normally our programs are during the afternoon-evening time. But it is usually part of our sports league, which means they're out in the sports field after, usually around six o'clock for the games, but not in our facilities. This is outside.
Do, do any of the classes start before noon?
No, no, currently no.
Nothing starts before noon?
Correct. It's after-school programs.
Yes, we're currently just an after-school program. And even during the summertime, we start at noon and go to three-thirty.
At noon to three-thirty? And then there is something in the summer that goes to six?
The summer, we have the summer camps, that is all day till four.
All day, all day, thank you.
Is there a code of conduct for your students that they have to keep? So the older children mostly obviously is, is the concern, but... If they run into trouble, stuff like that, is that something that would get ejected from your program?
Yes, we do have a code of conduct and all of our students know what it is, our parents know what it is. We give them an introductory packet to let them know. We have a strike system. If they get three strikes, they're, they don't come back to the program for two weeks and that is also with review to make sure they're able to come back to the program. Of course, we want these students in our program. That's why we don't want them to permanently leave the program unless it's for a serious reason. But, because we want to keep everyone safe. But we do have a system to make sure that they know and we have a good relationship with our parents to let them know what's going on in the program. And we've never had a problem with a parent. We work really well with them. They understand us, we're really good with our families. We have really good connections with them as well as the teachers that our students attend as well. We know a lot of them personally. So we can have, so they have also told us that our, their students have improved because of our program.
Could I ask you one other question? In regard to busing, buses coming, how often does that happen?
As far as bringing students?
Bringing the students, is it one bus trip a day, is it...
Well, right now we have, we use two fifteen-passenger vans. So not the big bus. We use, and we bring them to and from program for our after-school program. And that is just to minimize the burden on our parents to, so that we can transport them from their school to their front door. Make sure that they go into their front door.
Trying to get a, trying to get a, a feel for how many bus trips, if I'm a resident in any given day, how many buses are coming in?
Too many vans.
We have too many vans who come in and they, while the, and they're there while the, the students are there and then they leave once the students are there. They're not, there's not rotating constantly coming in.
Two come in and bring students?
Correct.
Do the vans stay until those students get ready to leave?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, the public hearing's closed. Sorry, not, not right now. Ma'am? Any further comments or questions by commissioners?
Yeah, I had a question. Is there a market for this land to the Park District? Or I see there's baseball diamonds nearby. Is it been tried to be sold to anyone else but this or is it... Is it Park District? Is St. Olaf's tried to sell this or to anyone else?
No, we have not. I mean, there's, there's been a couple inquiries put out, but nothing firm.
Ma'am, could you come to the microphone, please?
No, we have not been actively trying to sell the property. There were a couple of things that came up over the last six months or a year, but they never materialized.
Okay.
I have a question about, it was mentioned about students being brought in over the weekends and not part of your program. How do you control who shows up?
As far as the students who will be in our program, it will only be those who we have permission slip for that the parent, we have connection with the parents for. We don't want to let just anyone come in, just for the safety of our students. And as well as, we want to make sure the facility is secure when it comes to cameras and security systems as well.
Okay, but to help me understand, I thought you're going to open it up to non-students not in your program over the weekends?
When we do, when we do that, what we would do is, what I believe, is we won't have any of our students in the pro, there on Saturdays. We want, we are very protective of our students. So we do not want, we do not want any person there that we do not know about.
Okay, but who controls the students that are showing up on the weekends and are not part of your program?
I think he's referring to if there's a basketball game or something, where these, you, you, do you understand where these people...
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I was understanding you're going to open this up for non-students in your program over the weekends?
I'm going to let the manager of the program speak on this question.
I need you, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I certainly do. I'm sorry, I couldn't be here earlier because I was with our after-school program. I manage the programs that we're all talking about. And there will be no open gym or open on Saturdays. I know, I'm sorry, that was, okay, can you hear me okay? I'm sorry. On Saturdays, it will be for our program children. Anybody that's in our programs will use it on Saturdays. But all the same, vetting, the same, filling out a permission slips. We know the families will be using the gym, which we hope will include even more of the area, although it's mostly older people. But we service Krug School that everybody's talking about. The schools in Montgomery are Aurora schools. We serve their Aurora schools. We have, at this current time, thirteen kids from Krug Elementary right in that backyard. So, no, it's not, the Saturdays are not open except for the children that are already in our programs.
Okay, so it's only for students in your program this facility will be used for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Who, who are the staff, is it, like, how, is it, how do you vet them, I guess? Just want to make sure I, I want to understand who's, who's watching over the kids, right?
Absolutely. Most of our staff are people that are going through, like right now, we have AU students are going to school to become a teacher. So most of our staff are teachers going through programs in universities or colleges. We also have high school students that come in and help with our younger ones. Everyone is fingerprinted through Fox Valley Park District. We have a very tight relationship with Fox Valley Park District and they allow us to use their fingerprinting services. So, it's extremely safe. And I just want to say that I have been their neighbor and I did talk to them on Saturday, many of them. And I, we hear their voices. But we've been an extremely good neighbor. For some of those that say they didn't even know we were there, sometimes we'll have seventy children playing outside in this field that we're talking about for the last twelve summers under my direction. And we have never had to call the police for our children. But we've had, I have called the police on the people that they're talking about to keep their area safe because our kids are there. And we will be the best neighbor that we can be. And I just do believe that maybe if we could rehab this, this meeting again in a year, things will be changed because we are there to help the children in the community. So yes, we serve the public housing that are three blocks away from them where a lot of their problem is coming from. But we're serving the children that need it the most to help them so that they aren't in their backyards causing problems. We're teaching them character. And we're teaching them, we're giving them education, like Mr. Lukas said. And we're, we're helping giving them hope in their futures through Jesus and through providing programs that they otherwise would never have. So then they're out in the neighborhoods in the summer causing problems. We want them at our program, including, and so we talk about busing kids in from Aurora. We don't bus that many kids. We've been servicing Aurora schools. That's where all of our flyers go. We have the biggest baseball league in Aurora right now and it's all free. And we serve the whole Aurora and Montgomery and the kids are in our leagues. So, please know, it is going to be better there for the children. And I know we talked about it, I would love to have another meeting with our neighbors, so...
Thank you. Commissioners, any further comments or questions?
I got a question, just speaking of the sports programs. It was mentioned how much, or how many students will be using the Park District land for doing sports?
Our baseball league, we, the Park District gives us our fields and they're not those fields. We're at MLK Field on Farnsworth and we're at Copley Two on Beach Street. So our, our league, our baseball... So our, our league, our baseball league won't be at our facility.
Is anything stopping them from using those facilities in that park?
It's a public park.
So they could just walk over there and?
Like any of the other children in the area, yes, they could walk over and use that park.
Unless, you know, during the summer, they do have leagues going on there, so.
Right, it's Park District leagues. It's Park District, yes.
But in theory, your students could use those facilities too.
During the day, during our camp, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, we don't, we never use those because we don't have, they're only with us three and a half hours, so we can't play a baseball game or anything, so we don't use those.
True, but there's nothing that says that could not be increased, those hours, or over the weekend for your students?
We won't, well, first of all, we won't run programs on Sundays. And Saturdays, right now, we don't run anything. The only thing we would use that for.
Right, but you could.
Oh, we could, sure. That's not in the plans. We don't have a big enough budget to have a staff for all those hours. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioners are done with the questions and comments, or I'll go ahead and look for a motion. If you do make a motion, this is on the approval of the final plat, preliminary slash final plat of subdivision rezoning. Three conditions on there. I'd like to add a fourth condition, adoptions of finding of fact, please, when you make the motion.
So the conditions are on page twenty-eight of your packet. Look at the bottom.
The red, the red, at the bottom.
This is for number one. It's for I, I think.
Commissioner Hammond, what was the fourth that you wanted to?
Number four is adoption of findings of fact.
Okay, thank you. So again, we're looking for a motion on approval of the preliminary plat of subdivision as well as the rezoning of Lot Two to B One.
What happens if there's no recommendation, if none of our planners here does that? Sounds like everyone here is hesitant to make a motion.
I will let Matt handle that one.
So, so you can make a motion to approve, you can make a motion to reject. You, should you make a motion to approve? So generally parliamentary procedure-wise, right, if you have a motion to approve and there's no second, it would fail. If you have this motion to approve and there's a second, it can still be voted down. Anyone on the board can also make a motion to reject the findings and deny the subdivision and rezoning. That, again, would need a, a second. Ultimately, your best practice would be go down one of those paths, either a motion to approve or a motion to reject and see where the vote comes out so that it's clean about what the commission wants.
If possible, could we make it a motion to approve just so that you're not then voting no to say yes?
It usually is best.
Okay, I'll be upfront. I'm going to vote no, but I can, I can make the recommendation for approval, knowing that I'm going to say no. So at least we'll get it on record. So, okay, I will make the, a recommendation for approval of PCZ 2025-001, Wayside Cross Ministries for Preliminary Final Plat of Subdivision and Rezoning to B One with the following conditions. One, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans and the final plat of subdivision. Two, approval of the variation from Section 7.02 to allow on irregularly shaped lot. Three, village board approval of the, vocat, vacation, I'm sorry, of the right-of-way for extending Elliot Avenue. And four, the findings of fact. Is that enough for me to say, or I have to go through the findings?
Adoption of finding of fact. Motion? I'll second.
No.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
No.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Yen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
I'm staying.
Okay, moving on to item two, public hearing, consideration of special use for indoor recreation.
So if anybody from the public has any additional questions they want to ask or clarification on the special use that they are requesting to operate the youth activity center, you can come down and ask those. Otherwise, your comments from the first hearing are noted and the commission can continue to deliberate.
Go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please step up to the podium. State your name and sign him, please.
Leanna Precup again. So I have some questions about transparency. In the plans that were shown to us before, there were no plans for a kitchen. In the plans that the fire department currently have, it's, it's different. So is there going to be a kitchen? Is there not going to be a kitchen? There's two different plans out there depending on whether they're being shown to us or whether it's being shown to the fire department. Number one, there's a discrepancy there. Number two, as far as security for the outside spaces, when the facility is not in use, they're talking about leaving it open and, you know, the neighborhood can use it and everything else. So our concern is the other children that aren't in the program that are coming from the housing project blocks away that seem to be causing most of the problem. What kind of security is there for the neighborhood that they're not going to be out there causing problems when there are nobody, there's nobody at the facility? And as far as their other facility that they're currently using, how many students do they have there? How many are they going to continue to keep there? And are they going to use this facility for all of their students then? And then I have a question about the zoning, because we're, we're going to zone this recreational, but yet they're saying that this is specifically ministry-based and education. That's their primary. So how are we going to zone it recreation when they're talking about making it educational?
Paul Mitten, one, my concern was back in 1997, we had seventeen inches of rain. That filled back there was like, the whole field's under four foot of water. What's going to happen to water runoff on that? It's going to be a pond or something, or? We just need some for water runoff, but we're, we're four foot below the road itself. So they built that land up and putting water toward us.
I just have one question.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole, you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. State your name, please.
Anissa Leifheit. Do you mind me spell it? A-N-I-S-S-A. And last name is L-E-I-F-H-E-I-T. I have just one question. Is there guarantee this is only going to be a youth day facility? Is this ever going to be an adult shelter somewhere down the road? Is there any guarantees that there will not be the other section of land ever built for a shelter for homeless? I applaud your work, your ministry. I'm a nurse, I understand. But with homelessness we've had in the areas, we have crime. So just want to know what our guarantees are, that this will only be used as youth and for how long? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, it's me again, Jen Hens. They kept talking about busing the kids in, but what about the parents? Like, would they be able to come and watch their kids? And would that be, oh, Marty signed on the other one. They be able to drive to the facility and watch their kids? And also, they were talking about a code of conduct. Are the parents held to a certain code of conduct? Do they do background checks with the parents so we know what kind of parents would be coming into the facility? And then also too, I thought it was kind of ironic that she said that she had to call the cops on the neighborhood a few times because of different things going on. So why would you even want to build there if there's already a problem and you know it? I just don't understand. So again, please take that into consideration.
We already swore, you.
Oh, okay. Sign, oh, okay. We were not asked for them to come there. They came there. We were asked for the Lutheran Church to have a daycare and we all agreed. But we never agreed on this. We were never even told. We live across the street and we know. We've never had any problems with anybody there. And if you've had problems with somebody, it could be a neighbor, I don't know. It could be somebody's dog, most likely, because there's some wild ones. But, and I'm not, they do do good. I'm not against that, okay? What I'm against is that they just snuck in under our noses. Nobody even asked. I thought they were just working with St. Olaf's. And now you're saying, and I saw that white bus or whatever it was, but how can we even have a chance when they just came right in and nobody ever asked us? We never had a chance. We, nobody allowed us to say yea or nay. But those young kids are good. I've seen them out there plenty of times in the summer. I just don't understand why they're been able to move right in there under our noses. And nobody, nobody made sure. Nobody made sure that we that lived there.
Ma'am, please address the commission.
We didn't know. We weren't told.
I understand. This is your opportunity to voice.
And that water, I'm going to tell you right now, they were at, behind my house today rooting out the sewer line and you should have smelt the sewer gas in my house and nobody even bothered to tell me. A whole different story. But I'm going to tell you right now, that is an old area and you all should know that. And there, nobody wants to put a dime there, but everybody wants to dump whatever they want. Not that you're a dump, but that what they want there. Look, you all live out near my daughter on the other side of town. You've got lots of land over there. Lots of land. Let them, let the problems go over there. You have no right to change our zoning. I've lived over there for thirty-five, forty years. I sweep them streets when people throw crap out in the street. Make sure the drain's unclogged. I do that. I've had enough of this silliness. I'm serious about this. This is ridiculous. You have no business to tell us where we're coming with our neighborhood. We've been paying for this water that's coming in there.
I'd like to wish all of you a very successful and very healthy lives. Now, does that guarantee that you will live successful lives and healthy lives? It doesn't. It's just a message of hope. They've provided a message of hope of what they hope to see happen. And coming from a teaching and a scientific background, I've not been given any statistics related to any needs assessment done as to what exact changes will happen in any of the constituents that they serve. And so I hope that we rely on the evidence, the statistics, and hope is great, but when we're talking about the impacts of people's lives, we really need much more.
Thank you. Sir, you swear testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Reverend Timothy Binger. I live at 222 Hardway Court. My backyard is facing your church. I've never had a problem with anything in the backyard. I've loved my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. They're fantastic. We watch out for each other. It's an older community. The reason me and my wife bought the house, we did, is because we just got a sign. We saw the house for sale, we bought it. And we have loved every minute being there. Now, I believe your ministry is really good. It's a great plan. But shouldn't it be for the people in the area, the immediate area? I mean, I understand the kids in Aurora, they got, they got bad things going on. They need a place to get focused on, but our kids need that too. And I think it would be fair enough if their kids would come to our neighborhood and show us that they know how to respect the people in that neighborhood. Because that's part of teaching them, respect. Respect to your elders. It's always said that by many people. Even in my religion, it says to respect your elders. And my religion is far older than the Christians. But we're not about religion. We're about property. What should we do? Do we give them the zoning or do we keep it residential? It's been residential for ever. My house that I bought, it's the second house built in that subdivision where I'm at. I bought it from the original owner. It's a great neighborhood. And I wish you all could see it, walking down the street during the summertime, when the neighbors are out walking their dogs or talking to somebody over the fence about what barbecue grill they're going to buy this year and what big party they're going to have. These, this community, no matter what street you're on, whether you're in Sherman, Douglas, or if you're on Hardway Court, all these people come together and they want to keep it that way. But I understand that you folks need a place to go. Olaf's is there. They've been using it for thirteen years? Fourteen years. That's a long time. And it never shined on anybody in the community that they were there. It was a hidden gem. But now they want to put this ostacious building on the property and here it is. But it's only going to be used for four hours a day? But it's only gonna be used for four hours a day? That's kinda crazy, don't you think? Spending all that money to build that building for four hours a day? To me, that's kind of useless for money. That money could be spent on building a really great picture, or fixing Olaf, instead of buying and building this great big monstrosity. And I hope that you will see that and look at the neighborhood and the people that are in the neighborhood. And help us keep our neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Any questions? No comments? Okay, at this time, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, open it up for commissioners. Comments and questions, please.
Actually, Engineer Ott, could you quickly talk about the stormwater? I know that was a question that came up from some of the residents.
Yep, thank you, Sonia. As part of the development, they will be, be building two large stormwater detention basins in the southwest and area surrounding the existing residence at, I don't know the address, so I apologize. As part of the Kent County Stormwater Ordinance that the village follows, they are required to not release any more water than they currently are. And they are proposing to tie into the existing storm sewer. And there will be a restrictor restricting the flow, so it will fill up in the basin and slowly release out, so that they're meeting the same release rate that they currently are. So, they are proposing and meeting the requirements of the stormwater detention that is required by the village's stormwater ordinance. So, you know, from our, our standpoint, we feel like the improvements are going to alleviate any of the existing flooding problems that may have existed on the site currently.
Thank you.
And just so the audience does understand, as part of the development review process, they are required to use an engineer, submit engineering plans, and prove that they are meeting the stormwater requirements and other utility requirements of the Village of Montgomery. So, those are under review and will not be approved until they do meet the requirements.
I just wanted to clarify about the kitchen question or comment. The kitchen was from the beginning in the plans as one of the programs for the cooking class for children, to learn how to make a mac and cheese. That's basically what the kitchen in the program stands for.
Thank you.
I can also add some clarification. There was a question about whether or not it would stay only serving youth and whether or not a future shelter could be built there. So, we are recommending that one of the conditions, if it is approved, be that it is restricted to youth. That means that if they were to violate that, we would be able to take action, as well as it would potentially validate that special use. They would no longer be able to operate at all in that case. And then in terms of a future shelter, any changes that they want to make to the site plan would require an amendment to their special use. That means that they would have to go through this whole process again. So there would be neighbor notification, there would be public hearings as well. If they wanted to build, I believe the question was if there was going to be an additional building built, closer to Douglas is how it was mentioned there. So if they want to change the site plan at all, if they want to build anything else, or if they want to change the, the conditions or, or operate in some way that's different than what is shown in their letter of intent, they would have to go all the way back through this again. And then there would be public hearings as, again, once again.
So, again, a shelter is not a permitted use in the B1 district. So if that is something that they wanted to do, as Tony said, a similar process would have to be done, where you would be notified, we would be having a public hearing, and the village board would ultimately need to decide whether that would be allowed or not.
Okay, commissioners, I'm looking for a motion on item two. In making the motion, there are eight conditions. I'm adding a ninth again to adoption of findings of fact.
So those conditions can be found on page twenty-nine of your agenda packet. Sure. Of course.
So I did have a question, just for the, the hours that they brought up. If you guys are closing three hours after school, the site is closed, locked down, no use after that timeframe?
That is correct.
Same thing on the weekend. You have a program on Saturday, your hours are, forgive me, four-thirty, I think it was. It is locked down after that?
That is correct.
And closed.
Yes.
So there's nobody on site, no after-hours?
No after-hours.
Parties or?
No.
Uses?
No.
No administrative activities?
We have, as far as administrative activities, we would be there maybe an hour after closing up and taking care of things.
Sure.
Our staff, yes.
Then what about cleaning crews? Like, does that come in overnight or?
No.
Morning?
That's us. So, yeah, we have a, not a huge budget. So, our staff takes care of everything right after the program is finished. So we're out of there. We're not in there in the evenings and there during the week. We, we put seven down, but our program goes till six. Our after-school program goes till six. And there was a question about the hours, only four hours a day. Well, we're only four hours a day now because we're sharing facilities with others. But during the day, it will be used more by our children. We'll be able to have a longer program. But we don't, we have to share facilities with others. That's why we are in need of a program, are, are building in order to have our programs longer. But not in the evenings, not on Sundays, and, and again, on Saturdays will be educational recreation is what we are. So it's not, we're not looking to have these big leagues. We're teaching our kids how to play basketball and how to play so that they can go to other leagues later. But it's, they will be playing inside that gym during our programs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so you're extending the hours, you said earlier, during the week. What?
For the, so our summer camp goes from noon until three-thirty.
Gotcha.
We would probably go from ten to three-thirty.
Okay. So not during the normal week, not summer camp?
Summer, that's only during the summer.
Correct.
During the after-school program, it's from three to six.
Okay. And that's not looking to change?
Right.
I have a question.
Ask someone a question in terms of after-hours security. What, how, what is?
So right now, I can tell you, we are putting in a metal detector for, during the day, for, to keep it safe while our children are there. So are you asking, well, we have like a security officer there after hours? Are you ask, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Not at this time. There's no plan.
Okay.
I have a question. Excuse me? And it was mentioned here, there was also plans to host events for participants and their families.
Yes.
So what are those?
Sure. So our summer camp runs seven, well, seven weeks, I should say eight weeks, because now we'll get to go eight weeks. We had to stop at seven weeks because St. Olaf has their Vacation Bible School that eighth week. So we'll be going eight weeks. And at the end of the eight weeks, we'll have a picnic with our families. So our kids, the families can come in and see what their kids have been doing. So we have a play, we have some music that they get to hear. We do, we have APS that comes from Aurora, which is a STEM science program, and they'll get to see what their kids made. And so it's just, uh, end of the year, the end of the summer picnic. But we don't do anything like that for after-school program.
One more question. For the, that parcel, you know, that long strap, right? This just could be green space? Are there any plans, like, are you using it for, to children, or is it just green space?
So we need grass for our kids to play on. So that will be their outdoor play area, that they'll be, you know, put little soccer nets up, but they're removable. Anything we do, we need that, that playground.
Thank you. So I'm still looking for a motion on item two.
All right, I'll motion for the approval of PZC twenty-twenty-five dash zero-zero-one for special use of indoor recreation with the following conditions. It's all eight of these, so state, number one, staff approval of final landscaping plan, staff approval of final photometric plan. Number three, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans. Number four, fire district approval. Number five, the use of the facility shall be restricted to those described in the petitioner's letter of intent dated February twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and shall not include drug rehab, rehabilitation. The use shall, number six, the use shall be restricted to serving youth under the age of eighteen. Number seven, programming shall end by seven PM from Sunday through Thursday. Number eight, should any problems stemming from insufficient parking be generated by the use of the facility, the property owner shall either provide the village with an agreement between the property owner and the church on the adjacent church property, or shall add additional parking spaces on the subject property adequate to relieve the problems. And number nine, approval of the findings.
Adoption of findings of fact.
Adoption of findings of fact. Adoption of findings of fact.
Got a motion, you have a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, please call a roll.
Vice Chairman Yan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bond?
Yes.
Commissioner Yerkitis?
No.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
No.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Item three, public hearing in consideration of multiple variances from the United Development Ordinance, including variation from section seven dot zero-two dot C dot two to allow irregular lot shape. Two, variations from section eight dot eighteen, table eight dot eighteen, to allow proposed building to exceed the B1 district seventy-five-foot maximum building setback, and to allow proposed building to have less than sixty percent required transparency. Three, variation from section eleven dot zero-six to reduce the amount of buffer yard landscaping required on the property.
Yes, so again, these are the variances that are required for the structure as well as for the subdivision. If anybody has any further comments or questions at this time, when we open up the public hearing, you're welcome to come down and ask those for further clarification. And then we will close the public hearing, allow the commissioners to deliberate, and take the next vote.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time. If you'd like to speak on this item, please step up to the podium, state your name, and
Judith Brown, and I spoke earlier. Again, I'm just requesting that all of you take a drive by that area and look at what a business uses allowing zoning for business into that area when it's in a residential district. And I ask you, would you want this in your backyard? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah.
I'm sworn in already. Well, I didn't know we had the architect here, so that's wonderful. I hope I didn't hurt your feelings, but is there any alternative to this bunker-like wall?
I wish we could.
I wish you would have.
I wish I could switch the slides.
You can if you want.
I can, I can do it, I'm sorry.
You can do it, maybe.
Just, first it'd be continuous load showing the new.
Really? That was a failure. Also, I just have a question. Basketball, all the basketball courts are indoors?
Yes.
Yes.
No plant, one basketball outside?
One inside.
One ins, that's it? There's no plans to put one outside either, no?
No.
Will that have to be?
What image would you like?
That's probably the worst image. I just, on a personal note, I just think that's prison-like. I'm sorry. I mean, there's gotta be another way. That's just, that's a pure wall. You guys are, you have to imagine living across from this thing. It doesn't look, it looks a little bit bunker-like. And I know you probably can't have glass all the way to the ground because of the playing inside the gymnasium, but there's gotta be a way to design this a different way, to make it aesthetically more pleasing.
So one thing that's not shown in these renderings is, the landscaping is not quite accurate. They do have more trees and things to try and block out the wall.
Yeah.
That is something that we could potentially, you know, try and increase to try and remove as much of the visual of that brick, if that's, you know, if the commission is amenable to that.
May I ask why the other hedges are, have been omitted then? What's the reason behind that?
So the landscaping they're asking for relief from is along the, the northernmost area going towards Douglas.
Right.
So, not having to provide the continuous hedge along that area where there's no building.
Yeah.
And then also along the shared property line with the church, so that would be to the east, going to the church's parking lot on that side. So those are the two areas they're asking for relief from, the required continuous hedge.
Right.
So along directly to the north where their building will be, will have the required landscaping where there's residences. And we do not require the continuous hedge along the shared property line with the park. However, there is landscaping that they are providing along there to provide screening. And then they're providing the required landscaping to the south, where there is the house directly to the south of them.
Right. Well, I think, I don't know, I don't want to say back to the drawing board, because that's not gonna happen, but aesthetically, I wish it was different. If it's going to go in, it's, yeah. You know, this goes back to my earliest point, that, you know, these kids, so this is an after, after-school program. These kids are in school during the day. Why can't we leverage existing resources in these currently existing public schools for these services for these kids? Why do we need this building?
Can I answer his question? Yeah, so the school districts do not allow outside programs to come in and use their facilities. It's very hard to get in. I don't even know, they're barely letting Boy Scout and Girl Scout programs meet in the schools anymore. And we are a Christian organization, so we have to keep church and school separated. So that's why we can't use the schools. We'd love to, and we used to, but we can no longer do it.
State your name, please.
Jessica Sanchez.
You spoke before, right?
No.
No. You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I live on two sixteen Hardway Court, and I grew up on two twelve. So I've lived here most of my life. I remember my dad telling stories about the reason why he bought this house was because of the backyard that it had, the openness of it. And there's a lot of talk about kids, 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 and all kids are important, but personal experience growing up here, this was one of the best things, the best backyards that we had. It was open, and now I get to raise my children in that same area. If I wanted to look at something like that, or live in the business area, I would have bought a home in an area like that. One of the main reasons why I decided to stay in this neighborhood is because of this backyard and the openness that we have. So, another concern of mine is, Saturday was mentioned, two months out of the year, this building is not in use for the children. So you're building a brand-new building, what is that gonna be used for when you're not using it for children? You guys are just gonna let an empty building sit there? Saturday, they also said or mentioned about grandfathering the neighborhood children in. There's not very many, but that was quickly taken back, and then she said, there's not enough time. It's March, why isn't there enough time for the neighborhood children to be able to maybe see and explore what this program is about? So what are the requirements to be able to get into this program? And again, like I mentioned, what is the building gonna be used for during those two months out of the year that it's not gonna be in use by them? Thank you.
So at this time, we don't run a program.
So at this time, we don't run a program in May and August. It's in between our programs, our after-school program and our summer program. Yes, would we like to fill it during those two months and extend our after-school program and our summer camp? We would, but we can't right now because we don't have the facility to do so. And we do have time to have the families that are that whole circumference of our building to come in and get to know. I gave that invitation on Saturday to them, and I said, please, come and see what our programs are about. We want them to be a part of it, for sure.
Thank you.
Lisa Simpson?
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the true, the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I understand that we're looking for our children. And I commend you guys and think you're doing a wonderful job. That's understood by all of us here. As being good Christians, don't we look out for our neighbors too? What about all of us that bought into this property? My husband and I work very hard. You're taking away what we bought into. We looked hard for our home. I gotta tell you, we looked probably a couple of years to move into our home. We do not want this big building or this ministry in our neighborhood. It's residential, you know? Christians, look out for your neighbors also. God bless the kids, we're all for that. But please, look at our side. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'll get to where then?
No, you're already been.
Oh, okay. I had to look this up because that's our tax dollars that are paying for these schools. And I don't think they took away your right to use the schools. And as best I can tell, by a few different places, the schools can be used. That's for after-school programs. We have the right to use what we're paying for. And that is the schools. And I could be wrong, but that's not what Google's saying. So let's put all the cards on the table correctly and in order. That's what I think.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm an emotional person. Because if you're going to tell the story, tell the whole story and nothing but the story.
Please state your name.
Samuel Walters.
You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I guess my only real question, I live right across 250 Melrose, is what type of pollution am I going to have to live with looking out my front window when they're not using the building that lights off? Is the AC not going to be running? Are we going to be listening to the equipment? I do enjoy sitting in my garage, looking out, and I can see the stars some nights. And I am wondering, is that going to be gone? Already with the school, you have some, but they seem to be pretty quiet and not really well-lit and pollution. And I just want to know, what is that going to mean for me? Thank you.
So I still don't understand, are there outdoor sports facilities? I keep hearing indoor basketball, but then somebody said something about outdoor. So my question with that is, how do you keep that secure when you are not there? From having other people come in and use that? I haven't heard an answer for that yet.
So we have been there for, like I said, 14 years. We don't have anything that's permanent outside unless we're there. So we do have little soccer nets that our kids play soccer at. But those come in, we don't leave them outside. So we don't have anything for anybody to do outside, and we would not do that to our neighbors. We understand basketball courts and things that can be played at when other people, when we're not there, to police it and make sure it's safe. We don't have anything like that, and we don't have any plans for it. That's why we have that indoor area for our kids to play. Especially because we're there a lot of the time when the weather isn't even good. So, but in the summer, everything comes in.
Thank you.
And to address the light pollution, we will be following every rule, engineering and village and ordinance requirements for protecting areas. And it was mentioned multiple times that currently provided preliminary photometrics make no impact on neighboring properties with the light pollution. There are metrics for that.
Thank you. Is there any further comment from the public? Comments or questions? If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments or questions for?
I have a question for the village. They're mentioning about basketball courts. If someone would decide to build a court outside, would the village have to approve that or could they build?
They would need to get another, they would need to amend their special use for, to allow for that outdoor recreation. If they're going to build that permanent outside.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, this is a consideration of multiple variances from the UDO, including variance from Section 7.02.C.3 to allow irregular lot shape. Proposed to bill to exceed the 75-foot maximum building setback and to allow proposed building to have less than 60% transparency. Three, variation to reduce the amount of buffer yard landscaping on the property. And again, with this one, I will add number five. On the conditions, adoptions of finding effect. So if there's no further comments or questions from Commissioners, I will go ahead and look for a motion.
Excuse me, what page is that on for this final?
That is also going to be on page 29.
I would move for approval of PZC 2025-001 for variations with the following conditions. Staff approval of a final landscape plan, staff approval of a final photometric plan, village engineer approval of the final engineering plans, fire district approval, and to adopt the findings of fact.
Thank you, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Baum?
Yes.
Commissioner Yakitis?
No.
Commissioner Ott?
Yes.
Chairman Hammond?
Yes.
Commissioner Baum?
No.
Commissioner McNeil James?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Yan?
Yes.
Okay, this item will appear before the Village Board next Monday, March 10, 2025. I believe that's at 7:00 PM.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is community development update and new business.
Before we move on, I just want to reiterate, in case it wasn't clear to the audience, that this is just a recommendation, this is not a final decision. That's what the next two meetings are for. The next one will be further discussion, and the final vote will happen at the second meeting. It's an entirely different group of board members. There are board members here if you'd like to speak with them.
There is an elevator if you need one, ma'am. Alrighty, well, everybody, as everybody is filing out. I don't have much of an update for you. I know we've had a couple of cases that were before you last month.
Ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is still, ladies and gentlemen, the meeting is still going on. Please exit the room so we can continue.
Alright, so the cases that were before you last month have all been approved by the Village Board for the receiving stations. The Express Car Wash that was before you did end up withdrawing their petition, so that project is not moving forward. We have not had any permits issued yet on any of the ones you've recently approved, but they are going through the permitting process. So I'll keep you posted on when those permits start getting issued. We do have an application for a public hearing for next month, so we will be having that April 3 meeting. And I believe that is all I really have for an update for you this month. Oh, and for those of you that did attend the Planning and Zoning Commission training, I hope you found that helpful.
Anything, anything from the Commissioners? Any items of new business from the Commissioners?
I found it very helpful.
Yeah?
Me?
Good.
Yes, it had a lot to, to address. Those that are attending the meeting as to what specific being are supporting. Seven point seven feet, you know, that is not being supported, you know, that doesn't pass. And that those, those kind of things down the road in terms of lead are very important. Another thing that they mentioned was that it was really very helpful in high-stretch kind of meetings to try to stay neutral.
Absolutely.
And of all people, was that not what was that mother meeting before? I had really got upset and offended. And that was in the, in the tutorial that was talking about that kind of impact down the road if such, the findings do not, you know, the applicant does not agree, could take things like that and off to the, to the courts. That is, you know, is, you know, particularly stressful is to try to stay very calm, very, you know, just, you know, understanding, but not a lot of, you know, the aspect of, you just doesn't, they said it doesn't pay off.
Well, I'm glad you found it helpful, Mildred.
Okay, if there's nothing else, next meeting is April 3, 2025, and we are adjourned.